It is 5 o'clock and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. The City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have your call please?
Council members Kennedy and McEckern are absent from tonight's meeting. Councilmember Negretti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cox, Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time for public comments. I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to address the council. Therefore, we will recess through our closed session, but before that, we will have the declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We have four closed session items this evening. First one for the Airport Authority is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. It is the litigation between the SEC and the City of Victorville and the case number set forth on the agenda. We have a sister item to that as Item B on the City Council, same litigation matter, same Government Code sections. Item C is real property negotiations for the City Council pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. Property location is set forth on the agenda along with the negotiating parties. And lastly, for the Water District, Item D is also real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And again, the property address and parties to negotiate are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular 6 o'clock meeting.
Thank you. We will recess to closed session and we will convene at 6 p.m. It is 6 o'clock and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have your call please?
Councilmembers Kennedy and McEckern are absent from tonight's meeting. Councilmember Negretti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney Keith?
Thank you Mayor Garcia. We had four closed session items this evening. The first was existing litigation for the Airport Authority pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. The case name and case number set forth on the agenda. The second item was a City Council item related to the same litigation also pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. Again, the case name and case number set forth on the agenda. The third item was a City Council discussion of property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The property location is set forth on the agenda as are the negotiating parties. And the last was a Water District item, also real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And also, the property location and negotiating parties were all set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to any of the items at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will have the invocation which will be delivered by Pastor Ray Jim of Jubilee Community Church. And after that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by both Chiefs and Ushia. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we just look to you for wisdom. We trust in you, our hope is in you, and we just ask your blessing on this meeting. With everything that's done, everything's discussed, every decision that's made, be under your watchful eye in Jesus' name. Amen.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just as a preamble to the presentation, and this is Rebecca Hall from Idea Hall. We thought it'd be an opportunity to share with this council an update as to, a lot of the marketing activities have been occurring over the last year and largely resulting from a contract that we asked you to support, or I believe it was last April, I'm sorry, April of 2014, where we had started talking about repositioning some of our marketing efforts to be much more representative of economic development from a utilities perspective and from an airport perspective. And some of the abilities to do so effectively were to create necessary tools to get there. So, we spent a lot of time establishing those tools over the course of the last year, so we thought it'd be opportunistic to share this with you before we go into the next budget cycle and plan for the next marketing program.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Rebecca Hall with Idea Hall. I brought along with me my colleague Megan Curtis. Megan serves with me on the day-to-day activity with the City of Victorville. I love being up here. For those of you who haven't met me before, I've been coming up here to support the Southern California Logistics Airport and the City of Victorville since 1999, on and off. So, there's some nice continuity and it's been just a joy to be part of the vision and the growth that you all have had here. So, we're no strangers, although we are based in Orange County. So, what we brought for you this evening is an overview of the program that we put in place last year. We really set out, our agency really tries to do things in a progressive order. We always start with a strategic planning and branding. This year, we did a slight evolution just to become more current with the times, take advantage of the new technology and the internet. I think the last website lasted maybe 10 years for the economic development, so you got some great value out of that. And so, I just want to kind of walk you through today. Oops. I hope I get this right. Oh, good. This is Idea Hall. And I'd kind of jump through my, who we are, but just to back up, Idea Hall is a full-service branding, public relations, advertising, web, video firm. We kind of serve as an outsourced marketing department for a lot of companies and we don't have to use all of the tools, but we try to integrate and even counsel the city when we have the opportunity on how we can, if we're going to create one thing, how they can use it further within the city and with the other activities they have. We have a real strong specialty in economic development, commercial real estate and kind of the ecosystem of growing businesses, finding properties, infrastructure, transportation, all of these areas that work together. So, you can see some of the clients that we affiliate with. And then, this is what I jumped into. We're going to share with you today just an overview and then some of the tools that we have created. So, to jump in, I think the thing that we're very, very proud of is the website. Oh, I'm jumping ahead again. Forgive me. So, the goal this year that we set with Keith was to, you know, we always want to keep our eye on how do we attract businesses and jobs into the city to drive the economic growth. Some of the specific things we're trying to achieve this year, really, you know, look at the brand and try to become relevant again. Obviously, during the recession, not only, you know, this city, but many, many companies just worked with what they had, but we had a new opportunity this year to really upgrade the technology and you'll really see that in the website. Create tools that assist the city in converting leads and that is built into the website, into the PR program and into the advertising. And to create awareness of what a great opportunity this location is in the city for all kinds of businesses, airport-related, shopping center-related, auto and several other areas. So, moving forward, just a couple of the top-line results that we achieved. Obviously, we updated the website into it to use the state-of-the-art technology out there. When you, I don't, I hope you've had an opportunity to see this and it's playing here on my left. When you go to the homepage, we have a full-screen video that plays. So many people who are outside of the area don't realize how active our airport is out here, and so that was one of the things we just wanted to show. Look at what's happening out here. It's real. It's not a dream. Look what's really going on day-to-day. And we have several testimonial videos and pieces that really show what's going on and have your customers, your constituents speak on behalf of the great experience they're having here. The other big thing we did to get the word out was using media relations. We placed into real estate and economic publications more than, well, more than 1.5 million readers looked. And if we had bought that space in advertising, it would have cost us $266,000. So, that's a pretty significant value. We also placed some top-tier publications like Neop and SIOR. For those of you who are familiar, those are key publications where the brokers read and the real estate development community reads. We also worked with Keith on his, on the LinkedIn profile. Is everybody familiar with LinkedIn? It's where social media is for businesses and helps get 300 new connections that he can outreach and share the news about the great things happening here in Victorville. And then, we just updated the advertising. Some things were actually placed in different publications, but we also made them so that Keith and team can use those as collateral materials, flyers, that they can share with people as they tell people about what's going on here. So, let's jump into it. We've got the new website and it's actually playing live over here. One of the key, a couple of key criteria that we talked about with this website is that it's fully responsive. We have such a mobile community today that we need to plan on people looking at our website from their desktop, their laptop, their tablet and their mobile phone. And so, we wanted to create a design that was responsive, so no matter where you're looking at it, you get the information you need quickly. I actually brought a tablet so I could show you, and I'd be happy to pass this around if anybody's interested, on how the scrolling works, because this is one of the key components that was so important to our target audience. So, we know that this is, you know, one of the number-one tools that commercial real estate brokers and people who look at locations, site selectors, use their tablets. And so, this was one of the key criteria to make sure that we had that. We also have live news feeds and live social media tweets. You can see on the bottom of the page, they're regularly updated by the city. The website also came with a very robust content management system that allows the city to maintain the website with news, content, information. They can change all of the content on this website using their own controls, so they're not tied to a web servicing company to make those changes, so there are not more costs I'm going to move on unless you have any questions about the website. So, moving into public relations, the definition of public relations just keeps expanding more and more. So, we looked at a number of things. Some things were, you know, traditional like media coverage and here you can see we've got more than 20 feature articles. That doesn't mean syndicated articles. That means where somebody actually talked to Keith for an interview about the growing city and the successes that you are having. Plus, there was also press releases and syndicated news as well. Again, we talked about the coverage and the value of that and it's a great investment in your awareness. Here's a number of the different publications, and I do have a printout for you to leave with you, so you can look at these a little closer. And I know Keith has these on record as well. But we're very targeted into our target audience of where we can find people who want to do business up here in the desert. Byline articles is a chance for us to have ultimate control over our story and shared advice and opinions on site selection using Victorville as a resource. And so, we have placed five of these this year. We work with Keith to interview him, write those and place those in these key national And then, we've also put out five press releases on the big news that's going on here. LinkedIn, we really just have started to crack the surface with the opportunities with LinkedIn. But one of the most important things we could do is expand the database of brokers that could help bring business into Victorville. And so, we took, we increased it, and we just started this recently actually, and have already increased it to over 300 new connections since January. We also needed some advertising to go into some of the trade, go along with some of the trade shows that Keith and the team attend. This was one of the pieces that we did called Smooth Operations, and this was targeted at the aviation industry. It was actually placed in Aviation Business Daily and Aviation Week. This one was a local pride piece that we created called Made in Victorville, and we featured some of the products that are made here in town and placed this in site selection online as well as the Vida magazine. These are two pieces that could be advertising, but we use them more as handouts and collateral pieces. The one in the front here is what we call an infograph. And it really just, this is a popular, very shareable way that people say, "Well, just tell me the facts." And so, we just try to make it very entertaining to present kind of heavy information. And I think Keith and the team have been getting some really good response to this particular piece. May I invite you to ask any questions?
No, thank you very much. No questions here. I did see the website when it came out and I shared it immediately. I think it's, going back to the storytelling, it's really putting, you know, the positives out there in a way that, you know, some of the things that we have online are, you know, probably dated or whatever, so this is very much more contemporary, so I just thought it was well done.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
Thank you.
All good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. Have a good time. Thank you.
Let's see, at this time, we, I will be asking our city clerk to present the agenda to the council and any revisions to the agenda.
Mayor Garcia. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There is one revision to the agenda that has been provided to the council and to the public. It's a revision to Item Number B3. This is a supplemental staff report that is being presented, and those are the only revisions I have. Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. At this time, we have no appeal hearings, so we will be moving on to public hearings. Item B1, application for certificate of public convenience and necessity transportation for us. I do have some cards. No, I'm sorry, not for B1. They're all for B2. So, at this time, I open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the council or speak? A resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville finding and declaring that the public convenience and necessity justify and require the granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to transportation for us.
This public hearing is closed. I've been with approval of Resolution Number 15-020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and McEckern absent.
Now, we have Item B2, 2015-2016, Department of Housing and Urban Development had annual action planned. And I open the public hearing and I do have some cards. I will card, the first one here is Deborah Davis. And after Deborah, I have Frances Carrion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the time that you're expending on this this afternoon or this evening. I'd also like to, first of all, thank you for the funding that we did receive in past years. We have had a long track record of providing services in Victorville. We've been coming up and doing this since 2000. We did not apply for funding last year, but we are back this year. You have the application before you proposing that we will serve 160 individual new clients to benefit the 500, approximately 500 members in their homes. These services will assist them in curing problems that affect their daily lives with respect to peace, peaceful access to healthcare services, authority to grant social services for the caregivers, and also to stabilize income and to point out habitability problems with local renters. We do believe this service is extremely necessary to assist your most challenged residents to take constructive action to cure those areas of their lives that affect their poverty level. We also find that more than 68 to 75 percent of the people we serve up here do fall within the extremely low, low and low moderate income levels. Once again, I'd like to thank you, and if there are any questions that I can offer answers to, I'd be happy to do so.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Frances and I'm here representing a Better Way. This is my first day here, my first time, so I apologize if I'm coming up here at the wrong time, but you did call my name, Frances Carrion. So, I'm, again, I'm with the Better Way Domestic Violence Agency here in Victorville. We're located on Hispari Road in 14114. And we are an emergency shelter and an outreach program. We offer classes. We have a peer support group, anger management and victim impact classes. Our classes are Core Certified, one of the very few, if not the only, place or agency that offers these classes free. This year, just, I have some numbers for this year that I went through. And for our peer support group, we had 130 clients. And for anger management and parenting, we had 72. For victim impact, we had 81. We issued 95 certificates that were Core Certified. A lot of our clients are ordered to do these classes. And what else do I have for you? And me myself, I do, I'm at the courthouse every Tuesday assisting victims of domestic violence to file restraining orders. This year, I assisted 118 different clients to file restraining orders. So, that's one thing that I'm very proud of, that we are allowed to be at the courthouse, helping victims to file restraining orders. And I also want to just thank you for your continued support. We can't do it without you. And I hope I came up here at the right time, because you did call my name, but I wasn't sure if I was supposed to come up here or not. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, not yet.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Matthew Coghlan?
My name is Matthew Coughlin. I'm the Executive Director of Moses House Ministries. I wanted to thank you for the funding that Moses House has received over the last three years in a collaboration effort with Rose of Sharon, both combined to offer emergency assistance to families of young children that are residents of Victor Valley. These programs are designed to provide core support in the areas of counseling services for families trying to ensure that they have access to resources, meeting with trained counselors as well as caseworkers. Part of the goals of these programs are to provide stability for families when they're met with a crisis. They often are handed a list of phone numbers and expected to navigate through a minefield of yeses and nos. And so, programs like this collaboration with the Rose of Sharon and Moses House Ministries enable them to meet with a person who navigates that minefield for them, finding direct resources that are going to meet their specific needs and not just passing them a list. Furthermore, we're able to provide tangible resources in the forms of diapers and emergency formula, clothing items and other necessities for their children, which helps the economics of the family. Many of the clients that both of our programs serve are on county assistance. And between the cash aid awards and the food stamps, there's often a gap that does not enable them to provide the necessary means for their children. And programs like this with the adequate funding are able to bridge that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Barnes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Greg Barnes. I'm with St. John of God Healthcare Services. And I just wanted to take a quick minute to tell you thank you for all your service and your work, your assistance in providing for this community. St. John of God, along with pretty much all the other nonprofits, dedicated to improving the lives of our community. If without your help, it wouldn't be possible. So, thank you for the past and for the future.
Thank you. Jimmy Waldron?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. My name is Jimmy Waldron. I'm the Executive Director for High Desert Homeless Services. I just came here to wish you guys a good evening and to thank you for your consideration. We submitted two grants through the CDBG, one for public service and one for construction. And we just wanted to thank you for your consideration in providing us with this assistance so we can help those in the community that are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Black?
Mayor Garcia and Councilmembers. I'm with Sexual Assault Services and our main office for the High Desert is the Victorville office location. And it is said that any victim of sexual assault, be it a woman, is typically going to experience, again, another assault. And then, if she experiences two assaults, typically, she will quadruple the chances of experiencing yet other assaults. And so, we're here in the community trying to meet the needs of those who have been victimized by sexual assault. We offer them support groups as well as the men. We launched our first male support group last year and we have received, we've received requests to start again. So, we're going to try to do that next week, I mean, next month. And also, we are going to empower our youth by launching in June our team-driven advocacy program where they can address alcohol and drug issues, pregnancy, runaway situations, and they will actually run this particular program. And so, as we start all of these new things and as we continue with our old services of counseling, intervention and advocacy, we just would like to thank you for your assistance and support in the past years and appreciative of any consideration that you may give to us for the upcoming year. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so I will close via public
Did you want to speak at public comment or during the public hearing for this item? That's at the end.
We have no one else to speak, and the public hearing is closed. Is that correct?
It's closed. That's correct.
This is, this is just, the way this is worded, it's a public hearing on the plan and the recommendations, conduct the hearing, receive the input, adopt the HUD Grant Review Committee recommendations, approve and adopt the plan as presented, authorize the manager to execute all. Can this all be done in one action, or does this require separate actions?
It can be done in one action with one motion.
Then I will move that, that, since the public hearing has been conducted, we've received the input, the public hearing has been closed, that the council adopt the HUD Grant Review Committee recommendations, and approve and adopt the plan as presented for submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the state manager to execute all necessary documents for submission to HUD. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
Item B three, consideration of the, let's see.
Prior to opening the hearing, Madam Mayor, I have a question. I note on the news and in the newspaper that the state water regulators are still amending and changing the conditions. We can't start too early. We know we're going to have to take an action. But I hope it's not the intent to adopt the ordinance tonight, is it, staff?
No, it's actually the intent to continue the public hearing to on May fifth, regular meeting.
I just wanted to clarify that before we open the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of the adoption of water conservation program and amending the district's water shortage contingency plan is set forth in proposed ordinance number VWD dash zero one two entitled and ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District adopting a water conservation program pursuant to Water Code Section three seventy-five and amending the district's water shortage contingency plan to comply with emergency regulations adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board pertaining to drought conservation. I now open the public hearing, and I do have one card, and that is Luana De La Frey. Oh, I think I said it wrong.
Mayor Garcia, it's Luana Lafor, but that's okay. I've lived here on this desert since nineteen sixty-nine. We have gone through drought after drought after historic drought.
You bring the microphone a little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-nine. We have gone through drought after severe drought after severe drought. In this, which I've read, and some of the other things coming out of the state, we are continually asked to use less and less water. We continue to do that. At what point, and I would hope it would be made clear at some point, how much water are we allowed to use? I mean, we cut twenty percent last year, you cut ten percent the year before, you want twenty-five percent this year if you have no yards? Where do you cut anything from? You know, it's just, and now we're talking about a tiered system. You know, and I've read in here, we could have up to five hundred dollar fines. That's fine. I understand for certain things. It's just for years and years and years, we've been asked or told, cut back, cut back, cut back, change this, change this, change this. We spend thousands and tens of thousands of dollars as homeowners doing these things. And how much more, I hope in the end, somebody can tell us that we truly have to cut back. And what does that mean? Does that mean then we don't wash our clothes, we don't take our showers, we don't wash our dishes? Because at some point, it's going to come to that. If we continue to let everybody just move in, our population's going to continue to go up in the state. And that's what's going to happen. But I just see here in Victor Valley, for all these years, what has happened? You know, no, very few green lawns, you know, gardens, my garden is in this. So if you all go to a certain state in this, my garden is gone. I can no longer have my garden to feed my family. You know, those are things that are important, I think, to the people, some of the people in this valley. So that's all I have to say on that. At some point, I'd hope somebody would just be very clear, or at least give us how many gallons a day, and let us choose what we're going to use on ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards.
Madam Chair, the request here would be to continue this item. The reason it's not ready right now is because the state is still drafting regulations. We hope to have an ordinance previously on the agenda tonight, as you'll see in the original staff report. Between the drafting of the ordinance and as late as last Sunday, a new set of regulations came down from the State Water Resource Control Board. They are still basically in a comment period, receiving comments and drafting regulations that they're going to impose on all communities in California. And the purpose of this ordinance will be to set basically a formula by which the water district can determine what compliance level is at. And if you'll see in the staff reports, the various impacts of those various tiers. Right now, what they're looking for with the City of Victorville is going to be a twenty-eight percent cutback. That's kind of the range that we are looking in right now. And that then is going to mandate certain actions such as not being able to water medians, et cetera. But again, the intent now is to adopt a ordinance before, May eleventh is the deadline, so at the May fifth meeting, we hope to have an ordinance in somewhat final form. And unlike most ordinances, it'll actually become effective immediately. And then the water district will be tasked with figuring out which tier we fall into based on how, or based on the city's ability to sort of meet the criteria being set forth by the state. And along with that, then you'll have the different requirements as to what you have to abide by. So the plan again would be to have this continued until the next meeting on the fifth. At that time, we hopefully will have a more comprehensive draft ordinance along with the staff report, and we'll have a better understanding of what the state regulations are going to look like.
Thank you. I hope that explains and answers some questions.
Right, there is a proposal to basically put into a tiered, put into tiered water system, and what cities in the past have done have essentially set up a structure where you penalize people that are using more water by charging a higher rate. Just this last week, there has been a Court of Appeal decision down in San Juan Capistrano that has found that that system of doing it is deemed unconstitutional. However, the decision's not quite that clear. What they basically say is in order to have a tiered system, you have to find the nexus between the cost of delivery of the water versus the rate you're charging. So it's going to make it very difficult for water districts to actually comply with the new Court of Appeal decision. It's going to impact Governor Brown's desire to have all the cities in the state comply. It's going to make it a lot more difficult on local agencies to be able to comply based on this new court ruling. But tiered systems in themselves are not unconstitutional, but you're going to have to do a lot of work to make them survive a constitutional challenge.
Thank you. So as was explained, this will be continued to May fifth for regular city council meeting. We move on to consent calendar. Item C one through C six can be approved with one motion unless there's an item that needs to be removed for discussion.
I have approval. C one through C six?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
Written communications, presentation of request to approve a piggyback purchase of a Ford F dash three fifty Supercab trucking the amount of seventy-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award downtown Ford sales a piggyback purchase of a Ford F dash three fifty Supercab truck from the state of California. Contract number one dash fourteen dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight is budgeted for in the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen capital improvement project, CIP budget.
Before I make a motion for approval, we didn't get any local bidders on this?
This item is actually a piggyback based on the state contract.
Well, they don't, local option is not, they can't bid it?
Um.
They can and didn't. I was just curious.
Yes, Doug Matthews came up to explain the procedures that we went through. I know that we recently did bids as soon as two months ago or so. This is a piggyback based on that process. Doug, if you can explain further?
Yeah, we had a large bid a few months ago where we did put out a bid. This is just a single truck that we're looking to get in an expedited time. We did have some issues getting some deliveries on the last one, so we were looking to try and get this in this budget year when it was budgeted for. So we went off the state contract, which is competitively bid, to be able to get good prices, and it meets our criteria for bidding.
Thank you.
I have approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D two, presentation of request to approve the piggyback purchase of one shorts model M six avalanche CNG, single engine mechanical room sweeper in the total amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five dollars and forty cents. That the city council award Atlantic Machinery Inc. through their distributor municipal maintenance equipment, the piggyback purchase of one shorts model M six avalanche CNG, single engine mechanical room sweeper in the total amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five dollars and forty cents, under the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, contract zero two two zero one four dash ANI, and is budgeted for in the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, capital improvement project, CIP budget.
I have approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D three, presentation of request to approve the piggyback purchase of a Ford F two fifty Supercab trucking the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents. That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award Ford sales the piggyback purchase of a Ford F two fifty Supercab truck from the county of San Bernardino, bid number eleven thirty-two, is budgeted for in the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, capital improvement project, CIP budget.
Approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
E four, award of contract for trench repair for Borden Excavating. That the city, that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to Borden Excavating in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the repair of trench along Dos Palmas Road between Alvarado Road and El Rio Road.
Project was designed in house by engineering staff to repair approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirty feet of water main trench. Not the water main, just the trench?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Proton, this trench was dug for water main. I don't recall the exact year. It was some time ago. And unfortunately, the trench itself and paving above it is failing. Perhaps it wasn't compacted properly. Not sure exactly why, but the trench itself is failing, causing damage to the pavement. So this is not to do anything with the water main, simply to recompact and fill the trench and repave that section of the road.
And this was completed at an earlier time by someone other than the city?
I believe so. I see Mr. Dingler, city engineer Brian Dingler, on his way down to give more detail.
Just curious.
Yes, this was an earlier contract prior to the city.
This would have been within the Victor Valley Water District. Brian, do you know the year that this was done?
I don't know the year.
My only concern is that we have had a lot of building and construction and extension of sewer lines and water lines and so on. And I hope that this is a single, isolated incident. I'd hate to think that we're going to have trenches begin to fail, and we've got to use money that we could use for projects to go back and make repairs that should be covered under a bond or some kind of warranty.
And another consideration too is this was in the county unincorporated area, Mountain Dew Acres, so it's actually a Victorville Water District line that was installed in a county island. Of course, that's part of the service area.
Okay.
So that normally the county would be inspecting the street, but in the future, we'll be careful about checking compaction on this, so it won't happen again.
I was just curious. I read through it, and thank you for that information. I wasn't aware of that.
One of the benefits of the cities taking over the water districts was being able to use city staff to do inspections like this in the future, or to, you know, provide expertise on roadway maintenance or any type of pavement that would not typically be something that a just strictly water district employee may have experience in.
Thank you.
So no questions? I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
E five, industrial water, industrial wastewater treatment plant additional appropriation. That the city council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors appropriate an additional six hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars from sewer to cover costs associated with increase in wastewater flow through the IWWTP. The motion here?
I will so move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. McEckern absent.
Okay, now we move on to public comments. I do have a couple of cards here. El Patel, and after that, it's Maggie Lo.
I'm here to talk about the police department. Just over a while ago, they had a, could have very easily been a shootout, but instead of doing what a lot of cops do in other cities, they took their time and they talked about it for several hours. They talked the guy down, and they took him to jail. They didn't rush the judgment and shoot. They took their time and they did the right thing. Now, what my, what I want, what I would like you to do is to put bulletproof windows in all the police cars instead of spending money on cameras, because the Victorville police can be trusted to do the right thing. And how would you like to ride around? I see the look you're giving me. How would you like to ride around in a car all day, never knowing, people can pick you off like nothing riding around in a car? With a high-powered rifle, they could kill the driver and the passenger with one bullet. So I think the cops deserve that. They're expensive, but they're worth it. And when you trade your cars in, you make a deal with the same company, where they trade off some of the glass, or I'm sure there's deals you can make. But I think they deserve bulletproof windows. And I think they should be the ones to make the decisions whether they want bulletproof windows or cameras. And I'm sure I know what they would pick. They'd be a lot safer. Now, the last time I was here, I brought up about these young kids. My doctor said... Now, the last time I was here, I brought up about these young kids, my doctor said, my ear doctor said, five, six-year-old kids can't even hear anymore because of the boomboxers. And I said, you could help them. If you want to help them kids grow up and hear, pass the city ordinance where they can't play the boomboxers in the city. Now, the other day I was trapped, three of them around me playing. I mean, they're crazy. They shouldn't even be allowed, they're disturbing the peace. Ridiculous. And conserving water, the best way to conserve water is not to let them build anymore. When builders build, they put several hundred sprinklers on the lots where they're going to build and let the water run for about a week for 24 hours a day. Before they even start building, they use a ton of water. So I hope you don't let them build anymore. This place is crowded enough as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Normally, as you know, I come with a prepared written statement, but I've been thinking about this pretty heavily for the last couple of days. And I want to just speak openly and directly to you. I'm here because I have shock and dismay and disappointment and embarrassment over the actions of the sheriff's department here in the Ohio Desert, which I discovered when I was on vacation in Temecula. I just saw some film footage today that I had not seen before. And I do not, I'm going to say upfront, I'm not rushing to judgment on anything because I wasn't there, but I do know the adage, you know, one picture's worth a thousand words. And I saw a surrendered individual. I'm not standing before you by any means telling you he's an upstanding citizen because we all know otherwise. And I believe he provoked and incited the deputies. But I do believe that they have a moral, legal, professional, ethical obligation to exercise restraint. I'm the former wife of a retired deputy, I'm a former reserve in this county, and, and the things that I can't wrap my mind around are simply this, did they not see that news helicopter overhead? Did they not learn anything by Ferguson, Missouri, Rodney King, all these other high-profile media cases? So I have talked about this briefly with some members of the department and confidentially. And what I'm hearing is, you've got a lot of young kids out there who probably weren't even, could have been just born in 91 at the Rodney King time of event, you know, that debacle. And certainly, you know, they're young, they're testosterone driven, you know, the heat of the moment, whatever you want to call it. But remediation for that behavior, because I read about that in the paper as a solution, remediation for that behavior, it's simply this, when you put that badge on your uniform, you're either going in made of the right stuff or you're not. There's no in-between. You either have the standards that the sheriff's department expects you to have... Ten seconds. Thank you. Or, or you don't. And I think that behavior, without me knowing a lot of the facts, and I don't even know who the deputies are, I don't want to know. But that behavior is at best reprehensible and at worst criminal. And not only do I want to see this man prosecuted, the suspect, right along with those deputies who are found, if they are found culpable. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have Robert Harriman.
I'm just going to say one thing real shortly. We do have a lot of our roads that have trenches that have sunk down, poor workmanship. And as a contractor, I believe we have 10 years for poor workmanship. Does the city go back after these people? I know you can't answer that, but we need to go back after these contractors that are not doing, their workmanship is lagging. I see in the same circumstance that was talked about earlier, trenches, whether they're water, sewer, or whatever, even that big sewer project that took place on La Mesa is already having problems. So I would like to see the city go after these people. I did 3,000 linear feet of sidewalk for the city of Victorville, and I believe me, if I had made a mistake, somebody would have said something to me. So I would like to see us more aggressively go after the contractors that are doing subpar work. We should always have compaction testing and that kind of thing, and I'm not blaming it on the city at all. I just think we've got too many contractors that are coming from down below. We need to use the contractors up here more and not put up with it. It's costing us a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. But this time, do we have a report from city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of items. Our community cleanup on April 11th was a big success. We had approximately 800 volunteers and they picked up nearly 10 tons of trash from our desert. So we thank all of our volunteers that came out for that. You, the public and the city council, I know, may have noticed that on Thursdays, our employees, many of our employees wear jeans. It's part of a casual Thursday that we started about a year ago. Originally, actually I think it was two years ago, to support the March of Dimes March for Babies. Blue Jeans for Babies was our first event. And it raises funds to support the March of Dimes to help mothers have stronger and healthier babies. So this past March, our employees raised over $1,000 by paying $5 to wear blue jeans on Thursdays. So we have since expanded that to be a year-round program. So local charities are benefiting from our employees dressing a little more casually once a week. So lastly, we have a master composting class coming up this Saturday right here at City Hall in Conference Room D. I believe it starts at 8:30 in the morning if anyone is interested in learning more about composting.
Thank you. Council members?
I have one item, Madam Mayor. We heard an individual tonight indicate that we shouldn't allow any more building, but we have somewhere around 15,000 lots that previously been approved. Part of the approval process is to go through the environmentals, planning commission spent a lot of time. And I think the private auto waters, we have to certify a 20-year supply. And with the drought and the governor's rules, is there anything changing that?
You know, I don't know that we have enough information about the rules because they are changing. I do know, having recently attended a program put on by the Mahaly Water Agency, that we have water supplies available through the year 2051 is their latest estimate. So they're very confident in our long-term supply as well as our short-term supply. We've got three years of water available, banked underground right now, that should the drought last three more years, we'll be just fine. Obviously, we need to talk about conservation now, in the event it does last more than three more years. But we're actually sitting very well with regard to water as a region.
I, I do agree, we need to have water conservation measures, measures just, you know, making the public aware in itself will result in some savings. But I am hearing that there are some cities down below that are going to be running into problems and thinking about a possible building ban. And I don't see any reason that that should happen when we consider where we get the water, the water we are entitled to. I know there's a drought, I know we need to save. But I'd like for staff to keep a close look at that and make sure if there's any changes that's going to occur, that the people who have entitlements to build in the council be kept abreast of any changes that might occur.
Anything else? No other business before the council, so this meeting is adjourned.